You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is November 20th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council and Mayor's Office Joint Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
So we'll go ahead and get started. Sorry for the delay, but again, I forgot next week is Thanksgiving already. So happy Thanksgiving to everybody. So we had our sanitary board district, sanitary district board meeting today as well. So want to cover a couple of things. So with the ARPA funds, there are some responsibilities and roles that we have to, some things that we have to do to meet the guidelines for the federal funds that have been distributed. This is not to go back over the list of items that have already been obligated necessarily, but the money that hasn't been necessarily spent. So we're going to talk about obligation, what that means, and the process we have to take because the council will have to take some action on resolutions for the money that's left. We have some huge buckets that we still need to talk through, but what the controllers are going to share is what that process is and what it means and the guidelines. Let's hope that she handles the copies. Alright, so just a brief agenda, ARPA overview of what obligation of the funds are and their recommendations and next steps, and then we'll go through some questions. Now, recommendations are just that, recommendations. So the discussion will be with the council. You don't have to agree with those recommendations. We can make changes because we have time, right? We have time to make changes, but all the buckets have been obligated. All the money has been obligated as far as all the resolutions that have been passed and all of that. We still have some large buckets of money though, that we still have to go through a process with. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just a recap of the ARPA funds that we've had so far. The total allocation that we received was sixteen million five hundred forty-nine dollars, five hundred forty-nine thousand and forty-five dollars. And this is what was appropriated to date, and you all are going to get a copy of this. But what has been totally obligated, and we'll hand those out to the council, is fourteen million five hundred ninety-two dollars and five, five hundred thirty-one dollars. Man, I'm going to get this right. So the total that we have to obligate of the appropriated funds is about one point eight million dollars. Okay? Pause here for a second.
Our copy changed, Jan, so we can work in one little copy.
The copy changed, Jan?
It changed.
So Debbie, yeah, I'll be ready. Everything that could possibly happen.
Today, yes, it did.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, ma'am, what's there's train appropriated and obligated?
So there's a difference. She's going to explain that. She's going to explain that. So appropriated though, is that it went to the council and we went through the three readings to appropriate the actual money. Obligated is a term that the government with the final ruling has established that we have to take extra steps to make sure this money is obligated for specifically what we're saying it is. That's the difference. I'm close. I'm close, alright. Let the controllers get to that, but here we go.
So all of the ARPA funds have already been allocated, meaning you guys allocated, allocated until the budget or appropriated to be spent. So with the interim final ruling from US Treasury, in order to not have to pay back funds we have not yet spent from ARPA before December 31st, we need to officially obligate them. The most straightforward way to obligate funds, the ARPA funds, is to enter into a transaction between, which binds the local government to a project in some way to spend that money. We can bind ourselves with contracts. We can bind ourselves with sub awards, and we can bind ourselves through MOU's contracts. We know what contracts are. Sub awards for these purposes, say we have nonprofit organization. We want them to facilitate a program for us. We can reward or award that money to them for the facilitation of that project. If we make awards in that way, they are not as obligated, they are not obligated to the deadlines. When we make sub awards, those receiving the sub awards do not have to meet the deadline for spending the money, which is December 31st, 2026. A memorandum of understanding is basically an inter-agency agreement. Say the executive mayor would make an agreement with the department head of his department. She could allocate, you know, with council approval, don't get me wrong, but the agreement would be between the mayor and the department if it's an inter-agency agreement. And that MOU has to have a specific scope of, and deliverable, scope of what the work is supposed to be and what, and what the deliverables, those deliverables need to be identified. And then must not disclaim a binding effect of the state. The agreement does not create a binding, binding rights or obligations. Amber, in your, I'm not going to speak to that. But we are mostly focused on these two. If we're going to do, when we do MOUs, we want to make sure we have a specific scope and we want to make sure it's signed by the executive and that the department did. Did I answer your question?
Okay, and so let me, let me go back. So contracts, for instance, you know, we had a contract for our website. That's a contract, right? We created PO, purchase order, drawn down. A sub award, again, that's, that's something where it's an outside agency. But let me talk about MOUs. So for instance, we have money for sidewalks. I have to create an MOU with the city engineer, right? City engineer, because that city engineer is going to manage that money for sidewalks. So we have to have it specifically spelled out in the MOU between the executive branch and the engineering department for sidewalks. So that's what that looks like. For Shannon, Eason, if there's money that has not been spent for the destination playground, for instance, I have to enter into MOU with the park department for the destination playground. So we're going to have a series of MOUs that have to be established before the end of the year. So, so recommendation.
Mayor. And these MOUs we're talking about, I'm just looking at the time, one reading?
MOUs don't require reading.
Okay.
The resolutions that you have.
Okay.
So once you approve a resolution, Amber's already starting to prepare MOUs. It's a basic template that we've already been provided. Baker Tilly, yes, Baker Tilly has provided us with the templates that we need for the MOU. So it's not like we're cleaning something scratch. There are certain things that it's just cut and paste, cut and paste, you know, for the MOUs.
I was just worried about how many meetings it would take us to do.
No, just one, just one for resolution because everything has been appropriated already. So some recommendations. So we had several big buckets. We had our affordable housing bucket, our neighborhood beautification, and then IT, security, we didn't move, flip the timer, but that's alright.
That's okay.
Reallocation of funds. So the next slide that I'm going to talk about for a minute, because I want you to know where this money is coming from. So reallocation of funds. So this, this is an I chart up here, but hopefully everybody has a copy now. Everybody got a copy? Alright, so basically what's remaining to obligate total is one point eight million dollars, alright? And this is from a series of different reasons. For instance, Project Save Neighborhood, and I'll talk a little bit about lights and stuff later. We hadn't spent any of the money. Quiet Zone project, we still had two hundred fifty thousand dollars left in that bucket. Security upgrades, Andy's a little unique. He still has a lot of things outstanding he has to do, but I wanted to show his buckets because it's significant in what we're going to show for IT. But he still has security upgrades, cybersecurity training, and IT upgrades. We were more specific than most cities in what we put in our resolutions. So we're going to have to amend those resolutions because we were very specific instead of broad. So animal control kennel expansion. There's going to be fifteen thousand dollars left. We do have a project proposal that has been established to create a new space that is going to, I think we, we had a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in that, in that bucket. It's going to cost a hundred twenty thousand, so we're going to have fifteen thousand dollars left. Workforce development and training, a hundred thousand, we moved from there. Farmer's market has ten thousand dollars. The bucket truck has sixty-five hundred dollars left. We finished the fuel distribution in Kefop. So basically you see what we have left. Neighborhoods, safety and parks, that was a five hundred thousand, four hundred eighty thousand left. IT upgrades, and then affordable housing with a hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand that we hadn't touched. And then we still had twenty thousand that we hadn't obligated to anything. So that's one point eight three six million dollars, right? So I want to start, start with the largest bucket. So the affordable housing bucket, initially we established seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in that bucket. This is a recommendation from me based on things I heard from you. Council, city council, not from the public, but from city council primarily. So a couple of things that I want to make sure is that, didn't use to hold seven hundred fifty thousand, but you'll see why in a minute. But one thing that we talked about was some type of senior and low income rehabilitation home, for homeowners program. Well, CDBG, I had multiple meetings with Sherri Wilson, our director, and CDBG already vets people who come in for emergency assistance. She already has contractors. So this will be to fill that gap for those people who don't qualify that fall into this bucket. Now, we have the Silver Birch Fund, which is growing. The good thing about this is over the next two years, we can use this money for emergency window repair, emergency furnaces for our residents that may fall through the cracks or in that gap. But she pre-qualifies people. That's the beauty of this. She does all the, we have an application already. We don't have to reinvent the wheel and go find somebody to do this already. We already do it, right? So, so there will be an MOU between the CDBG group and the city. Alright, rental assistance program. I did speak with North Central Community Central Action Agency about this. So we're finding that, so they have a rental assistance program. When they get funds, within five to six, five to seven days, the money's all gone. And what that program is, is that when, and it will only be for Michigan City residents, of course. It won't be for anybody in the county. It'll be for Michigan City residents specific. But when someone is trying to get into a home now, or a rental, it takes them deposits, first month's rent, sometimes last month's rent. They don't pay for deposits at all. But if someone is in the bind or behind, or they need first month's rent, they tap into this. So we're not talking about new residents. We're talking about people who are behind on their rent or get kicked out or whatever, and we'll work through that. But I did have an in-depth conversation with them, and they've been doing this for decades. This is not something new that they just started doing. They've been doing this for decades. Water utility assistance program. Salvation Army, North Central Community Action Agency, Cafeteries. Everyone does utilities for NIPSCO and everything else. During COVID, as a, I think I was the chair of the United Way, we got some money from the Lilly Foundation. That was the first time we were able to put money into a fund for people to get assistance with their water utilities. We own the water utility, right? And there is no assistance if someone gets behind. So it's a safety hazard to have children in a home without water, right? And so this is a way for us to put something into a fund that if someone is experiencing or has gotten behind several months, that they can seek assistance for water, for the water bill. The wheelchair ramp program, that's obvious what that is. And then homework bound infrastructure for Carwood. We've all talked to them. They've asked for a lot of money. My recommendation is fifty thousand to help with the infrastructure, which still benefits the city by doing some infrastructure improvements on Carwood Road. And then the rest of the money is, it goes back into the bucket. Next, neighborhood beautification. That number's not right because I, I changed. So neighborhood beautification. So we had set aside fifteen thousand dollars for a pilot program for streetlights. I've been meeting with NIPSCO. I've been meeting with Wendy Willis, who's the president of the Eastport Neighborhood Association. And instead of the city being involved in the middle of doing these projects, it would be beneficial if we just, we have two neighborhood groups that are active right now. And that's Elston Grove and the Eastport Neighborhood Association. And we talked about streetlights and we talked about beautification projects. They're already established. So the thought was, and again, I just put numbers to balance it. This is a conversation still, that they would do their own. They, they could, you know, I gave them the tools. I'll give them the tools, give them the contacts. But they've identified in Eastport, off-street lights at the corners and where they want them. But there is a cost to that. There's a cost for NIPSCO to install them. But if they want to do some other improvements, this allows organizations that are already there and have people to do it, right? The Levesque Center, I didn't put what that was for, but I don't know if you've seen, we've already funded some murals on the west side of town, but there are none in midtown or the east side of town. This is an opportunity for us to expand the arts program and the mural program into the east side and into midtown. As you know, we got murals on Hope, murals on North Central Community Action Agency. You got murals all over the west side, but none in midtown or on the east side of town. So Levesque Center for the Arts, I put that. But the biggest bucket is where the park MOU, and this is the discussion. Four hundred thousand dollars. So. So you have to have a scope of work that is expansive and what this will involve. And so I listened to, received some feedback from several of the council members. And some, some of this was from the first quarter of this year, so just want to say that. But we talked about park programs and upgrades in the parks, right? And qualified census tracts.
Yep.
Urban gardens and pollinator gardens. Neighborhood cleanup programs, funding those. New wayfinding signs. Neighborhood association startups. There's a new group trying to start up on the west side, helping to fund those things. What we're seeing with neighborhood beautification is we alone can't beautify the neighborhoods. It's going to take people being engaged to do it, right? Cultural programs and events in neighborhoods. Utilizing park spaces is going to be important as we move forward, you know, when it comes to health, when it comes to people having ownership. All those things are important when it comes to neighborhood beautification. So that four hundred thousand dollar bucket is where the council works with Shannon. Is, she's a dynamo on budgets and finding money and doing things with money and tracking it. So I thought the best place to put this money was with the park department so that we can come up with a program, decide on what you would like to see in those. Now, I did not put sidewalks in here because we have about four hundred thousand dollars budgeted between ARPA and the budget to do sidewalks. You gave me some, a list of some, Don gave me some. I have a list of different ones that are going to be a part of that process. Not listed here because this is money that we need to figure out what to do with. We already know what we're doing with that money. So that is the largest part. And I'll, I'll come back to these so we can have a discussion. So IT. Again, I listed all the ITs, the money, the buckets they had because we still have some things that are outstanding. So we have our network security migration that is mandatory and required. We talked about, we've purchased a lot of the cameras, but we, we know we need security cameras at Washington Park, the airport, and other park locations, and maybe even a few places where if we, once we move into our dumpster programs, some other things, we know that we'll need cameras. Refuse their access control and security system needs to be replaced. We know we have to replace our servers. There's sixty thousand, actually it's now sixty-five thousand, ma'am. I'll get the update on it. For the council chamber upgrades, we know we need new cameras, microphones, all of that that we're going to purchase and own, nobody else. And, but we know that from a standpoint of live streaming, I don't know if you all know, there was legislation passed in state government where there's some requirements of us now. And we want to make sure that we have the right technology to make sure that we're never in jeopardy. As far, and those upgrades are technology. I'm not talking about chairs or nothing like that.
The wallpaper?
No, yes, no, technology. Celebrite application, Andy is in here, but Celebrite is the application that the police has to use. I can't tell you whole much more about it. All I know is it's been a burden utilizing the app as far as the servers are concerned. I don't know if you can add anything, Andy?
Yes, Celebrite is used by the police department to forensically, basically import a cellular phone that's been taken from our investigation. And it captures every file that's on the cell phone and then puts it onto, into a folder. And with phones becoming as large as they are now, I mean, most people have phones that are, you know, have thousands and thousands of pictures and things like that. It takes up a lot of space. And what we're running into now is when they take in one of these phones, you know, you could have tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of files on one phone for one case. Well, there might be five or six phones for each case and so forth. It just becomes humongous. And what Celebrite is the current application we're using, but we're hoping to move that Celebrite over to the cloud. And so it's going to be on Celebrite servers, not kept locally. And what that's going to do, it's going to take away that burden off of our current storage system that we have, which is over eight years old right now. And we'll put it out in the cloud, and that's going to allow us then, when the other item that's right above the council chamber upgrade called servers for forty-five thousand, we're able to go with a lot cheaper servers because we don't need that storage anymore. I don't know if you recall, but back many, many years ago, I went to the council, almost nine years ago now, and asked for appropriation. We were trying, we were, at that time, the cloud wasn't very mature. We were doing a lot of things in-house and we had to. We had asked a little bit north of a million dollars just for storage. And that equipment is still running to this day, but it is becoming end of life because there's hundreds and hundreds of little drives that are on there that fail because they're running for eight years straight. So this is a tactic that we're trying, that I want to go ahead and pursue with moving that to the cloud. And this is a yearly fee, but for, this will be for three years. It's about thirty thousand dollars per year, which, you know, from a return on investment standpoint, this is going to be considerably more cost effective than for us to buy physical storage, house it here, retain it here, just for storing this data. Because for the economy of scales with Celebrite, they can host it and manage it a lot more cost effective for them and for us than us trying to do it all on our own. Plus, it allows us to be able to share this information with the LaPorte County prosecutors very easily because they can go into a secure portal and actually share this forensic data with the prosecutors and so forth. And it's all, there's a chain of custody that's kept between different departments, different agencies. And it's just, it's going to make it a lot more streamlined, a lot more efficient. Because right now, if we have something that occurs that there needs to be data transferred out to a different agency, they're still going old school with like bringing a portable hard drive or something like that because the thumb drive is too small because cell phones are big. And they're having to actually come physically to the station, copy that data, and then, you know, drive back to where their agency is. And this would just make it where they can just grab that data through a secure location on the internet. And it's managed all by Celebrite. It's got all the requirements for, you know, the Department of Justice and all that. But C G S, criminal justice information system, all those client things are all handled by Celebrite. And it really takes us away too from any vulnerabilities. So if that data is on there and it's sensitive, obviously it's very sensitive data, that's going to be housed correctly now, a hundred percent and managed by Celebrite so we can ensure that the security is all going to be there and also the capability to share between agencies is going to be there. So it's just a, wait a minute.
Thank you. I needed a break from talking. So fifty-five thousand, actually I think it might be sixty now. But we know that we, for us, we have to spend our money by twenty twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. So that's why, it's a three-year contract, but we're only covering two years of it. The website upgrade, so we're in the midst and the throes of our new website. But police, fire, and the park department have their own. So we did get an addendum from Sarah, we're getting an addendum from Sarah Group to include them because they need to be separate. But we still need them to have the same look and feel. But we know that those websites need to be updated as well for the department. So. First one is the big one. So as I shared last night at the city council meeting, and I shared today at the sanitary district meeting, Hammond ordered a truck. There was some mistake that was made and an additional truck was, was, was built that has been sitting, that's brand new. And those trucks, it went through the process, the sourcing process, all of that. But this is significantly cheaper than what the truck would cost. So we're talking two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for a rear loader. I gave you all a copy of all the maintenance things that have been happening. You all have that. We've talked about it till we're blue in the face. That's available right now. That two hundred eighty-two thousand dollar price tag is with a trade-in of another piece of equipment for thirteen thousand. It's not significant, but it brought it down to two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Vector dump trailer, I don't know if anybody knows what the Bloomfield mower is. I have a video, but I don't know if, when you're driving, I can, I can explain it. If you're driving on the highway, you know how you have areas where you have ditches and gullies? That's what it is. You remove it and it's mowing. That's what it is. And the dump trailer. Jessica, some mowers, a tow bar, and I forgot the other piece of equipment name, but for a total fifty-three thousand dollars at the airport. The fire chief, we talked about the battalion car that they use for all the battalion chiefs. It's had a hundred thousand miles. It certainly has some, some issues. They will keep that as a spare, give us the Durango to put into our rotation if we need to give back a leased vehicle, but it's fifty-one thousand dollars. Park maintenance, truck and the Billy Goat Blower, is it called a Billy Goat Blower, Patrick?
Yeah.
Billy Goat Blower, sixty-three thousand five hundred. And then for the street department, we have several trucks that don't have snowplow attachments on them. I don't know why, but they don't. We probably could have used them this year. But this, this is, these were some of the things that came from the departments that were elevated. They, some, they gave me a laundry list now. There were probably another two million dollars they gave me that they requested, but these were the items. But these were the items that I prioritized for, for the departments outside of IT that we looked at. Couple of other items that came up was food pantry and soup kitchen, soup kitchen support. We have several soup kitchens that operate daily. So to put some money into their, their coffers to continue through the winter time and through next year. And they're open every week. They're open every week. North Central Community Action Agency, the Neighborhood Center Emmett Wise on Michigan Boulevard, the corner of Michigan Boulevard and East Side. They went back to the drawing table, got the numbers down lower. They've asked us for $60,000. I can vouch for that location and I went there as a kid. But they have after-school, they feed children during the summer, they have a senior program. They do a host of things and that is one of our poor census tracts in Michigan City. So that is a recommendation as well. And then the Humane Society, we, we have a cat problem in Michigan City. And we would like to help pay for the trap, you know, neuter and release program to assist with that. Because I remember moving here, it was out of control in 2003. I had never seen so many feral cats everywhere. And we don't wanna get to that situation again. So we wanna make sure that we have money to do that. So as we expand the kennel, as we have cats, there'll be some money there for us to take care of that. And it's not a lot, but when people don't have money to do it and cats just start, when I say they multiply, they multiply really fast, really fast. So, and Shannon, I did make the change.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I did.
Always counting on you.
Doesn't want to anyway.
No. And so, so like I said, this is a lot to absorb, but I'm gonna go back to the numbers because we're gonna have a conversation about the numbers. But with the council resolution and Amber, we've been trying to figure out how do we do this? Because all cities are going through this right now. Some are, have a lot more to do than we do. But reallocation of funds, we have to have a resolution. We have to finalize the obligations, that's contract approvals if needed, MOU's approvals. Now, the MOU approvals, are those to the Board of Works?
Aren't they all?
Or your kids?
Yes, they are. And then any sub awards. So the sub awards be like North Central Community Action Agency. No, I mean, sub awards be like, yeah, North Central Community Action Agency, the Humane Society, you know, those things. And the deadlines are, we have to have everything obligated by the end of this year and expanded by December 31st, 2026. I find it interesting that the people that we give sub awards to have more time to spend their money than we do. But that's, that's the way it is. And here, their email addresses, if you have questions, if you have that. So I'm gonna go back now. I just wanted to kinda go through the, what, where we're at so we can get comments and questions. But then also spend a little time. Now back up and take the time to, for you to ask any questions. And I'll, I'll start here with any questions from the council.
I don't have a question, but I wanted to follow back up on the Michigan City, Michiana Humane Society. I did have the opportunity to speak with Johanna Humbert. She's excited. So what she would like to do, they do not actually do TNA there, but they are open to creating a program to do it because they don't actually trap the cats. But Animal Control does.
Our, our animal control.
Our Animal Control does. And so she's willing to partner with them to work something out and they will be happy to move forward with this. One of the things she mentioned, they do have a veterinarian there that's there three days a week, but they do healthcare and only do the animals, cats and dogs that they have there for them. But they can have the veterinarian to do it, which could possibly, this is not definite. This is just an approximate cost of $750 to $1,000 per, or, no, a day for the veterinarian. But within that one day, a veterinarian can, she could possibly do approximately 30 cats.
Okay, okay, got it.
So.
So like if we, so, so basically, nine times 30 is how many cats? Because that's how, $6,000. Just a short math, yes.
Yeah, and talking about the feral cats, because I'm related to the Animal Control Board. And we've had this discussion at the last two meetings. Assistant Chief Cooney, who's the chair of the Animal Control Board, he was gonna look into the trap neuter release program because he said Michigan City doesn't have one. And, you know, the cost of it, how we're going to implement it. Now, I don't know.
If he can get that to us, if he can get that information to us, we can adjust the bucket.
Well, that's, that, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't know where, you know, the $6,000 came from or how it was thought of. But Chief Cooney, if you'd love me to, I'll call him tomorrow. Tell him to call you and then you guys can have that discussion, okay? And we can go from, go from there. And speaking about feral cats, I mean, in my neighborhood, I've gotten phone calls about it. And feral cats, the city code, you're allowed to feed feral cats for two hours a day. It's like from seven in the morning till nine in the morning. And you can put as many plates of food out on your front porch as you want to.
Or your neighbors' front porch.
Because I've seen witness to it, what happens, okay? And, yeah, to me, there was a problem when you can just put food out on your front porch and start feeding every cat in the neighborhood. And I guarantee you, the cats show up to that porch. So there is a problem and, okay, I'm glad that I saw it on the list. But I will talk to the chief tomorrow and have him call you, get some money. If we need more money, put in that bucket to get this problem resolved.
And we can adjust all the buckets. Like Shannon doesn't know she has the biggest bucket of everything right now. But like for the neighborhood, that's a neighborhood issue. We can, it's a whole $400,000 bucket right there.
And, and she also indicated too, as far as what Councilman Chris Galiski did indicate in regards to the costs, that there isn't a TNA program here, that they would normally take them to the neighboring shelters or veterinarians that do do that. But as far as the calling, the current cat, that's roughly, she said, they can probably do it for at least $30.
That's what I used as a number for when I put that together, so, yeah. So that, that works out well. And if we can have a pilot program for the next year in Michigan City.
That would be great.
That, that would be great. Then we don't have to worry about transporting and doing all of that. So we'll, and maybe I'll connect Cooney and you in both the conversation. And Don, I'll include you in the email.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I heard the projects that you were working with the North Central Community Action Agency. And you know, the expansion over here on the Grayson Boulevard. Did the discussion come up regarding the, the weatherization program?
We really didn't talk about it. We talked about the greatest need. The greatest need is rental assistance. And if we're talking people being housed in housing and people being underhoused or in shelters, biggest need is there. But we're still gonna fill in the gap with our rehab program. But the biggest need is around rental assistance. They run out of money within a week. So that makes sense to me. If we want people to be housed and not in shelter, probably would, you know, I, I think it's a good use of money and it shows the community that we understand that there are some struggles and this is how we're filling the gap. So that's kinda how we came up with that. Because I called her. I called her up about the room and I said, hey, what other programs do y'all have? Because, you know, I, so, well, just to be frank, we had some people that showed up in the office that needed some assistance. And we had to call, we called everybody. We had family in the office. And we just don't have many options. Let me say that. If the, if the shelters are full and you're trying to get into an apartment and you need first and, first month rent and a deposit, it's next to impossible for somebody who's already underhoused, so.
Is it a possibility to address that again?
If you take from something else. So, but I'm worried about people who own homes, emergency furnaces, heat, water, those things. So those rolls to the occasion, so, or rolls to the time. I know, Don, you had your hand up again.
Yeah, the homework bound, $50,000. You know, you and I've had that discussion and we've had a discussion with the, with the organization. I don't know, it's been a year ago already, I think, since we talked to those folks, the city people. But did they ever come back with an agreement to say that it was gonna be for Michigan City?
They, they did, they did not. They said that they, you know what the conversation was. So I was very, very particular about it being for infrastructure because infrastructure is gonna help us in, in the long way, in the long run. So they, they need to put their, you know, water, sewer, those things are part of the project. We're gonna receive income off of that in one shape, form, or another. We're not necessarily gonna help them build the whole structure, but at least the infrastructure piece down Carwood Road, we can help cover the cost. I mean, but again, they told us that they would do everything in their power to, to try to make sure Michigan City residents, Leport County residents are housed in there. Did you have anything to add to that?
Not to that.
Okay, I'll just wait. Anybody else comments on homework bound? I mean, that's why, I know they asked us for $200,000.
Yeah, it was a lot, it was a lot of money, but.
But they did.
And our point to them was for Michigan City people. You know, not Leport County people, not people from.
Well, the county's given, yeah, and the county's given a significant, larger amount to the project. So they have committed a, a significant amount to the project, Leport County.
And they did because we were, they came to us first and we recommended, why didn't you go to the county first? So I, I believe they did.
They did. And so they're, so they're contributing. And I will say too that there is another grant that we partner with the Unity Foundation on, with the gift aid with Lilly, that it's a housing piece of it. And part of the money includes homework bound. And then part of the money is for our two ready projects and then for two projects for Mayor Tom Dermody as well. So there's some other buckets that are starting to bubble up for the project. Any other questions on homework bound? All right. Yes, ultimately. Oh, you still on homework bound?
Yeah, just one more comment.
Okay.
Just one more comment. And I know it's, you know, it's middle of November, almost end of November already. We have to decide, you know, what we're gonna get, what you, what you have. But I was hoping to see more possibly capital expenditures for like equipment and vehicles and things like that. Because my, my take on this ARP money is, is once this money's gone, this was money given to us by the federal government, once it's gone, it's gone. Next year, we're gonna need pickup trucks. And I use for an example, Vector Control. And we've had this discussion already. I mean, they have two, they have two pickup trucks. But to me, they're not worth driving, but they drive them. And, you know, why we couldn't afford to buy Vector Control two pickup trucks for their use? Because they'll, they'll be in use for another 10 years. What's gonna happen in a year from now, they're gonna be coming to us for $100,000 to buy two pickup trucks. So that's what I was kind of looking forward to seeing some items in that, in that respect.
I'll go back.
You're not, that's too late.
Oh, it's not too late. But we did not, they did not ask. I just thought about that. But they did, they did ask a couple of months ago. So let me think about that and figure out to, if there's some other opportunities there on, on a couple of trucks. So, and, and we do have two in here, but we didn't have one for, for Vector. So I could take another $55,000 from somewhere, I'm sure. So, but thi, this is the equipment that we have in here so far. So there are a couple of trucks in here. And a very pricey rear-end dump truck. Not, it's not a dump truck. It's a garbage truck, but nonetheless, yes, Daisy, I'm sorry.
The Quiet Zone project, there's $250,000 left in that. What is that going for, the truck?
It's going into the bucket.
It's going back into the bucket?
That's just the bucket, the 1.8, all the stuff that's on this list. But the dump truck, I mean, the refuse truck is pretty much covered by that. And, and we had talked about the Quiet Zone, I'll, I'll come back to you, Scott. The, the Quiet Zone, because someone talked about engineering and this and that. But let me say this. A, a project of, of that nature, if we were to spend money on the engineering, is a couple hundred grand. And the project itself is probably about six to $10,000. So not sure if we wanna spend this money like that. Voila. So that's just my opinion, yes.
On the garbage truck, the rear dump truck, do we have dibs on that or a security deposit down?
Kinda, sorta, don't, don't say anything, no.
If the council wishes it, is there anything the council can do to like, want a deposit to hold that for us? Because that's saving us like, what, $6,000 or $7,000?
Yeah, we have a relationship with the vendors. So they know that we're anxiously trying to get the truck.
That's saving space for a pickup truck, did I?
Stop it. No, I disagree. But, yeah, we probably could, but yes, so.
Wait, but the quickest thing the council is gonna have to do to spend any of that is to get the reallocation.
Yes, the reallocation resolution. So that, that, so going back to this whole bucket of money.
Does that resolution have to have all the goals for all the line items?
Well, we have a list of all of the resolutions because each of these items is in one of those resolutions. So basically, we have to amend it for the correct amount. And, and then, but the beauty of that, and I'm hoping this is how, me and Amber talked about this, Attorney Page talked about this today, is that the beauty of it, I think that if we can get that money freed in a resolution, then we just do like we normally do with our resolution and list everything, list everything else. And not have to do one for every single thing. You know, the goal is not to do that. So she's evaluating what's the best strategy to do it. So we're not quite there. This, it's amazing that no city is really.
Now, we've done something similar, I was pulling all the old resolutions because during the time, we had, the first one, the first resolution was for the essential equipment. And then as we purchased it, we had monies left over. So there was a resolution, you know, when, when we just asked for a change in the use. And we, that's how we got the stuff, got some equipment for the cemetery. You know, so we've done similar things throughout this ARPA process before is just creating a resolution, siding back to the essential equipment resolution with as extra monies and then saying where we would like to buy the cemetery equipment because like, as, as Mayor Angie mentioned, we wrote it very specific, we're buying this, 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 or this. And so we've done this, we've done something similar.
So you might, so you all might see the Quiet Zone.
So you might, so you all might see the Quiet Zone resolution come back because we wanna change the use of what's remaining to purchase.
It's the same.
The truck. So that, it's gonna look like that. The goal is to maybe do it one time and not for each and every thing. And that's what I think Amber's trying to figure out is can we do it in one big way or are we gonna have to individually do with each, you know?
Each one.
Each one.
And, and I will say with the Quiet Zone, like right now, Sean, so there's, so right now, I told him, you need to go ahead and get everything you need for the Quiet Zone, like the ballards, you know, uh, things that if people hit something, you know, do we, so, um, two hundred and fifty thousand, he actually has thirty thousand so that we could make sure that we have all the things that we need associated with the Quiet Zone. So, um, we told him, you need to start ordering that stuff now. Get it paid for this year, you know? So we're trying to push them to, you know, do that. And that's how we knew we had certain buckets and things left. But, um, Amber is, hey, you need to get, you need to get that stuff ordered. So we have it on hand, cause when the winter comes, you know, they're gonna be hitting those things or sliding into something and we wanna have stuff, you know, on site and ready to go for that. Yes.
Uh, question with the Park Department. And that's with the, uh, the golf. The North Course Clubhouse renovation.
Do we have a cost on anything for that?
Pardon?
But didn't we get roof money or something?
Did we get lot money?
Roof.
Getting the roof, so, fascia, yes. Yeah, I don't have a cost on. I mean, basically, I can give you a cost, what we've put in our capital. They don't have like a natural.
Well, I thought last year, cause Eddie Shin, myself, had been out there twice. Been out there with Mayor Perry twice. They wa- been out there with, uh, the previous city engineer, okay? Walked around it, he took notes. And what I understood is that they were sending it out for quotes on what it was gonna cost to rehab this building, cause to me, it's, it's a, it's a eyesore to Michigan City and it's basically just falling apart. And we all know, we've been there, we've been there, okay? And there's no secrets there. So I was just wondering why a project like that, if it's forty thousand dollars, can't be added into this and get it done and it's over with? Cause if it's not done now, where are we gonna get the forty thousand dollars next year to fix this building? So that's, that's one of my concerns.
I'll need to find out from, cause we got, we have, we got insurance money for the building. So I have to follow up on that.
I haven't talked to Eddie.
The war bids came for, through insurance, a hundred percent. Our bids came in under the insurance. But as far as, yeah, I'll have to look and see if there's quotes somewhere, I don't know if he ever got.
I, I talked to him, went out and, uh.
Now, is that?
We're raising the golf fees, so we'll cover it.
Is that a project that falls under the neighborhood beautification?
I don't think so.
I mean, that's more of a revenue generating.
I, I don't think so, but.
In, in all honesty, it is possible that we would have enough in our unappropriated balance to do that. But again, the golf course needs, in my estimation, is a million dollars worth of work. A million dollars in tree work, over a million in drainage, I just toured it. And these are just off the top of my head. Uh, the drainage is a bigger priority. I mean, if the course is closed, we're not making revenue. If we don't make revenue, we can't upgrade our paths, we can't upgrade our clubhouses. So we just completed task force study, um, over the summer and it does have short-term, midterm and long-term goals. And the clubhouse is behind there, for sure. Um, in my opinion, the tree work's gotta be number one, it's a safety priority. And then the drainage, like, why are we closed all the time? Because we haven't addressed the drainage. There's where our revenue is really going down there.
Thank, thank you, yes, please.
Is there any way, is a recommendation that would possibly fall out of the part? Tennis?
What about tennis?
To get a tennis court?
I don't know how much they cost, I, I've never heard anybody mention a tennis court, so.
So in our master plan study, we've always stayed away from tennis courts because we have so many in the city that are underutilized right now. Um, the schools have them. We actually looked at the.
The one on, oh.
Old Alston last year, um, cause we wanted to turn it into pickleball. Those courts aren't really in bad shape, so.
Can those be enhanced?
We don't, I mean.
Yeah, that would be through the school, yeah.
So we looked at them, very expensive, cause we wanted the school to rehab them so that the park could come in and give the pickleball courts and all use them. There's a lot of tennis courts in Michigan City right now. Useful tennis courts. Parker, Krieger, Trump Creek, he has courts.
So one thing I did not include in this list, like, for instance, we have the cemetery here. You know, we, um, did a, um, a, um, appropriation for them. They're spending their money down. But if they, if they don't have contracts, we have to do an M O U with the cemetery, right? So they, they have a bucket of money that they're using right now, um, as they've been going through their re, you know, upgrade, technology, all of that stuff, so that is happening currently, so.
Did we take care of the swans? Did they get moved? Actually, the, uh, the local carpenters union is gonna be donating their time to build us a shelter for.
So what I would like for y'all to do, like those recommendations whilst top of mind, just email me. Like, anything that you're thinking of. This is really like just a framework so that I can get something back to you. Uh, so that's why I'm like, okay, we're gonna talk about that, but Thanksgiving, you know, we got, we got a chop chop, you know, so I'm not, um, but again, this is, this is fluid right now. I just wanted to make sure I balanced, and I'm gonna make sure I get, make sure you see the numbers, cause I, there was a few changes. But, but again, it's this, it's this amount. And let me say, I, I am a strong believer, we spent a lot of money on equipment that they were not taking care of. I'm just gonna be honest, really honest, that we have done a poor job of maintenance on equipment prior to Mr. Farabanti and some of these folks. We spent a ton of money upfront on COVID, COVID money, ARPA money on capital. We did not put a lot into the community, okay? We did some grants for specific people, I mean, specific nonprofits who had the wherewithal to apply. Right? We did not do a whole lot with all of the soup kitchens that are providing food every single week. We did not do anything for rehabs. We did not do anything for rental assistance. So I understand we have some things for the city and that we've cut the budget significantly, but the ARPA dollar, dollars are still supposed to impact people, okay? So that's the only reason why there has to be a balance of both. Has to be a balance of both. And I think, um, some of the suggestions that I put in here does that. That was my priority, is to balance some of the needs that we have, but also some of the needs of the people who live in Michigan City. So I, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. I didn't, I, I did, I, cause I could, I could spend all this money real quick, uh, real fast. We could really spend all this money really quick and really fast. The good thing is, uh, some of the money that's, we, we have money, um, set aside for sidewalks, um, you know, to do more sidewalks in the city, probably more than we'll ever do ever again. Which I'm excited about. And, and, uh, so that'd be good. Uh, C C M G is one point five million again. And, you know, so we'll do three million dollars in, in roads next year. Uh, and I will make sure you all have that map. I, I had, um, Tony Basil put together a map that shows all the roads that were done in the last five years. And then where we're at on the Pacer. Next year, we have to do the Pacer again. That's six figures to do the Pacer, alright? So these are things that I'm looking at and making sure we get that stuff done too. Uh, but this is kind of what we, is in front of us right now. So sidewalks, we got some brick stuff we got going on, streets, I got that covered. But this is kind of where we're at, what I want you to focus on. Be a little creative. That one big bucket, we can be creative, you know? Um, I think the way to clean up the city is getting more people engaged in the city. Getting more people, more neighborhood groups, getting them active, activate them, give them some money to do some projects and you'll see garbage go away. Cause they'll start, just believe me, it's gonna take the people in those neighborhoods to stop garbage and trash. So, any other question? Yes, Dr. Porter.
So, uh, do we need to do all this at the first meeting in December? That way it'll give you enough time to have the contracts and everything done by the end of the year?
Preferably. You said preferably, I, I, we may, let's, we're gonna see what we can get done this week as you guys flood my email tomorrow. Um, if we can, I may ask for a special, um, additional time or a special meet.
The same is gonna apply for Board of Works if we have to bring contracts and stuff, you know?
Yeah, so.
So it's gotta.
The sooner the better.
You might do it first and then go to Board of Works.
Yeah, exactly.
And I just wanted to add too, for the streets, no foul attachments, that would be for how many attachments? And this is something, because we don't know how the weather predictions is gonna be. I mean, we did great last year with what we had.
We did.
Well, we're gonna get another year, I mean, the city, you did what you had to do. Um, so, so this is something that needs to be done for sure, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Cause they, they would have to order these, correct?
Yeah, I think they, they talked to everybody. I, I had everybody get, try to give me, uh, invoice type invoices, like with, uh, how much it was gonna cost.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, any other questions? Well, if, if any other questions, just, I mean, feel free to, to stop by my office. I'll, um, Friday, I'm pretty flexible. On Friday, I'll update the numbers to make sure I send this to Clark and to all of you so that you have it, uh, make sure that it's up to date. But then what I'll do though is add some additional page with some of the things that were mentioned tonight. So that way, everybody kind of has it top of mind, um, so that, uh, we're, we're all on the same page. Any other questions or comments? Wow, but thank y'all.
Thank you.